Meeting of the Mishawaka Common Council from Monday, December 1st, 2025 will please come to order. Good evening, those of you who are in attendance. We are happy to see you on a cold winter's evening. If you would, please take a moment to check your cellphone to make sure that you have placed it on silent or vibrate. And for those of you who are participating remotely, we welcome you as well. Members of the public are asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting. And at the appropriate point in the meeting, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments as they may wish to make, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. And then after completing the comment, members of the public participating remotely are once again asked to place their microphone on mute. And we thank all of you for your cooperation with us this evening. With that, if you would, please join us in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hazen?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Ms. Hahn?
Here.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Here.
Mr. Violi?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
All council members present in the chambers.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of November 17th, 2025. Are there any additions or corrections? In hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorial.
We have petition number 2025-21 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council, City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a petition to rezone from R1 to R2 to family residential to match existing use at 902 on 902 and a half, South Main Street. This is signed by Edward and Gwyneth Cicada. We have petition number 2025-22 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council, City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a petition to rezone from C4 automobile oriented to R1 single-family residential to match existing use at 2106 North Burkitt. This is signed by Alan Miller. Petition number 2025-23 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council, City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from C1 general commercial to I1 light industrial to expand business at 1825 East 12th Street. We also have a redevelopment commission spending plan report that is being presented to the council. No action necessary.
So noted for the record. This evening, we have no report of any special committee, so we'll move into ordinances on first reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2025-36 an ordinance declaring an emergency and transferring and reappropriating funds within the Motor Vehicle Highway Department in the budget adopted for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2025.
Proposed ordinance 2025-36 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2025-37 an ordinance amending ordinance 5915 fixing the salaries of all employees of the City of Mishawaka, except Mishawaka Park Department, elected officials, and the Mishawaka Utilities for the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, for the year beginning January 1st, 2025.
Proposed ordinance 2025-37 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2025-38 an ordinance amending ordinance 5950 fixing the salaries of all employees of the City of Mishawaka, except Mishawaka Park Department, elected officials, and the Mishawaka Utilities for the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, for the year beginning January 1st, 2026.
Proposed ordinance 2025-38 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2025-39 an ordinance amending ordinance 5875 of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, approving the participation in the State of Indiana Deferred Comp Matching Plan, Adoption Agreement, and Amendment 1.
Proposed ordinance 2025-39 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2025-40 an ordinance declaring an emergency and transferring and reappropriating funds within the budget adopted for the calendar year, starting, ending in December 31st, 2025. This is a funds transfer in various departments.
Proposed ordinance 2025-40 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2025-41 an ordinance declaring an emergency and determining the expenditure of additional funds for the year ending December 31st, 2025. This is also in various departments in the amount of $824,500.
Proposed ordinance 2025-41 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2025-42 an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 100, Restaurants, Food of the Mishawaka Code, Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana.
Proposed ordinance 2025-42 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2025-43 an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, amending the uniform schedule of fees.
Proposed ordinance 2025-43 will also be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2025-44 an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, establishing a merit system for the Mishawaka Police Department.
Proposed ordinance 2025-44 will be assigned to the Public Health and Safety Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2025-45 an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, establishing responsible bidding practices and submission requirements for public works projects.
Proposed ordinance 2025-45 will be assigned to the Budget, or I'm sorry, to the Public Improvements Committee. This evening, we have no resolutions, so we'll move into ordinances on second reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2025-32 an ordinance annexing contiguous territory to the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, and providing zoning classification therefor. This is to annex a zone to R3 multifamily residential for apartment complex in the 53,000 block of Fur Road. This is a public hearing with no vote.
Thank you. Pursuant to Indiana law, we will now open a public hearing on proposed ordinance 2025-32. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Good evening. Andy Heltzel with Dan Charner and Associates, 1643 Commerce Drive in South Bend, representing the petitioner. To give a brief overview, the same thing that we gave to the Plan Commission, nothing has changed. The petitioner is proposing to annex, rezone, and have a preliminary site plan approval for a 18.99 acre tract currently consisting of two parcels and dedicated right-of-way currently being used for drainage to be annexed into the city. It's currently zoned residential, single-family, and unincorporated St. Joe County. The proposed rezoning, once it's annexed, will be compatible with the adjacent residential and commercial uses. There is a wetland on-site on the south portion of the property. Only a small portion, less than a quarter acre, will be impacted with an access drive. The client is working with another consulting agency, has already delineated it, and will work through any necessary permitting through Army Corps of Engineer and IDEM.
Thank you. Any questions? Mrs. Volker.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Thanks so much.
Sure.
On the wetland, you said a quarter, less than a quarter of an acre will be affected. Can you tell me how big the wetland is?
I don't have an acreage amount. I've got it on my site plan here. I don't know if you have a copy in front of you. I don't have a total amount.
Do you have a guesstimate?
I would guess probably five acres.
Okay, so it's pretty small.
Yeah.
And it's, it's just a road?
Yeah, just the interior access drive.
So there's not going to be anything built in the wetlands?
Correct, just an access drive crossing over a small portion of it.
Okay. And then I had a question because this is in the Judea Creek area, and I had a question about the detention pond. Because it says that there's one detention pond on-site right now, but it's not going to be big enough?
Yeah, correct. We haven't done drainage or stormwater analysis yet, but I anticipate we'll probably increase the detention pond.
So when you put, do you think that this detention pond will be a pretty good size?
I would guess it would be similar to the size on the site plan.
Okay. The reason I'm asking the question is I'm curious about whether the, whether it'll be fenced off, the detention pond.
It's something we could look into. I don't know if we're opposed to it, but it would have to keep a portion under the fence open so that sheet flow could go under.
Oh, I see where it is. It's pretty big. Lake-size, yeah. Well, you know, we've had some issues in the past with detention ponds, so it's just kind of a top of mind for me. And I do see that some roads are going to be heading into that pond and just would be interested in you guys taking a look at some kind of barrier so that we don't have problems with children, pets, or cars going into it.
Absolutely. I'll make a note.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Hearing none? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone with us this evening who wishes to speak in opposition? Please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Hearing no one. Are there any council members who wish to speak? Then with that, we will close the public hearing on proposed ordinance 2025-32 pursuant to Indiana law. Our vote will be cast on this item at our next regularly scheduled council meeting on Monday, December 15th, 2025. Thank you.
2025-33, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from R4 to S2 PUD for single-family, attached single-family, and multifamily dwellings and clubhouse southwest corner of Burkitt and McKinley.
Thank you, ma'am. We have the committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2025-33, report that they have examined said matter and that in their opinion, it should be adopted. This is signed by members present, and I move for its acceptance.
Second. Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. With that, we will move into second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance 2025-33. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward.
Yes, Steve Ruby, Abbot Marsh Consulting, representing the petitioner here. This, as mentioned, is being requested to be rezoned from R4 to the S2 PUD. This allows for flexible housing types within it. This was purchased by Habitat for Humanity of St. Joe County. We have Jim Williams, president here with us. The project's pretty straightforward. They're looking forward to removal of the current mobile home park units. I'll let Jim speak a little bit more on that in a little bit here. But they're removing those in light of putting in more affordable housing in place of that as part of the Habitat's mission and build process. It's approximately nine acres in size. There's two kind of main front straits, one being McKinley, one being Burkitt. There are several arterial streets that coming into it that will service this property. It is anticipated we have stormwater on-site. There will be some public slash private road developments within the site itself, and we'll be working with the city engineering staff to accommodate the measures and needs necessary for those public roadways and infrastructure to be inputted into the development here. Excuse me. Habitat also engaged University of Notre Dame on this project to help them with development plans to look at the different housing types and needs that they see beneficial to the clientele base that they're looking to assist and help. And with that, we have partnered with them, with University of Notre Dame, to come up with a plan that you have presented in your package from the initial planning meeting that you heard from the staff report. With that being said, it's, they're looking to move forward over the next coming months with potentially a future build in the spring or midsummer of next year. With that being said, are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ruby? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward.
Jim Williams, president and CEO of Habitat for Humanity of St. Joseph County. First of all, as always, we thank you for your continued support of Habitat as we try to provide more homeownership opportunities for people in St. Joseph County and many people in Mishawaka. As you know, we've spent a lot of time and effort in our fields at Highland Subdivision, right there at the corner of Burkitt and Jefferson, and very excited to tell you that with approximately five houses left, all 76 homes, and the pocket park will be finished. And so we are looking for our next major development, and that would be this one, which we're calling Woodfield Crossing. What's unique about this particular project is it represents a variety of housing solutions for residents of Mishawaka. We're known for building single-family detached homes, but this will not only include single-family detached, but also some townhomes, some duplexes, which will be side-by-sides, some will be stacked duplexes, even some cottage courts, which we envision maybe some senior citizens might enjoy living in this community. So that's what we're looking forward to. And once this process, we figure out the title work, we have an attorney working with us on that. Because quite frankly, when we bought that property, all the title work for those mobile homes was a, was a mess. And we're wanting to get that, but we have to get that situated before we can demolish those mobile homes. And we know that all of you probably are just as anxious as we are to get that cleaned up. That's going to really make a nice presentation once we can start that work. But that's where we're at in the process. We currently have only three families, out of the 34 families that were there, left to rehome. And there is a solution for all three of them. They have something to go to. But by the end of this week, I'm told that they all should be moved out of that mobile home park. So I'm very proud of that. We had originally given a six-month notice, which would have been May 8th, that the park was going to be closed. But we obviously have extended that an additional seven months just to be considerate of those families. And because it just has taken some time to find the proper solutions. And so that's why it's taken a little bit longer. But we always said from the beginning, that was our main priority, is to take care of these families and to make sure that it worked for them. And we also gave every one of them an opportunity to come to information meetings so they could learn and possibly even become homeowners with Habitat. So that's just a little recap of where we're at. But I thank you for your consideration of this proposal and would answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Williams? Mr. Violi?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just curious. Did any of the former residents take you up on that offer, or not yet, or you don't know, or?
Not yet.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. You answered all my questions, but I want to take this opportunity to thank you again for all that you have done in this community and what you are continuing to do and spending a lot of time and effort on making sure all those residents have been rehomed. So I appreciate the delay to make sure that that happens, and thank you for the continued work.
Thank you.
Mrs. Volker.
Thank you. Hi, thank you. I'm just looking at the preliminary, I think it's the preliminary site plan here.
Yes.
I had a question about, because McKinley is such a busy street, and of course, it's not very wide there and, you know, super busy intersection. And I'm looking at the site plan, and I believe you'll have buffer between McKinley. What are, what's going to be on McKinley?
Right now, it's being recommended to us to put some multifamily. I think there might be two fourplexes. But we're actually going to do this in phases, and that would be the very last phase. So we'd be able to get a feel for exactly what that is going to be like for the residents. The buffer would only be, would not be a berm. It would be probably trees, something like that. And then the way that the fourplexes would be designed would be to try to minimize the noise from McKinley for those residents in those units.
So just to follow up with that, then, would there, would there be any kind of fencing? Or is this too early, too detailed to ask a question like that?
No, I mean, we've, I can't say it's been finalized, but we have discussed fencing, decorative, something that would look really nice, but we haven't decided what that actually would be just yet.
Well, I've just asked you to keep an eye on that. It's just such a busy street. You've got, you know, you'll have lots of families in there, lots of kids. I don't know what the population looked like, you know, in terms of ages with the mobile home park, but I can imagine a lot of families in there and just want to make sure that they're safe.
We share the same concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Then thank you, sir. One comment with regard to, and Mr. Ruby mentioned this, but I decided to pick on you instead of Mr. Ruby. With regard to the interaction with the city vis-a-vis public versus private roadways, I would encourage Habitat and the, and the administration to be as open to the maximum number of public roadways as possible. And there may be site plan requirements that thwart that goal. But I think from a council standpoint, especially this time of year, we hear a lot from residents throughout the city with regard to snow plowing and other related issues with regard to private roads. There's a good place for private roadways. It's, you know, a legally permissible decision to make. But I think from our standpoint, we prefer to see roads with new developments like this, particularly with this one, that is going to be such a benefit to the community. The maximum number of public dedicated streets as opposed to private roadways. Again, there may need to be some, but if you can work with the administration, as I suspect that you would anyway, to try to emphasize that, I think that'd be appreciated by the council. The other thing that I'll say is that this is not only a benefit to the community as a whole, although that clearly is true, but I'm really excited for what this does for the school corporation as well. The fact that there are going to be a variety of houses and housing that's going to be part of this development, but that, that infusion of students into the school corporation. For a school corporation that's really landlocked and does not have a wealth of developable space, it's really beneficial to the school corporation as well. So thank you, and thank you Habitat for your willingness to partner with not only the city, but with regard to, with the school corporation to make this happen.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? If you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone with us this evening who wishes to speak in opposition? Please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Hazen?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hahn?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 920. Proposed ordinance number 2025-34 an ordinance annexing contiguous territory to the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, and providing zoning classification therefor. This is to annex a zone to C1 General Commercial District for landscaping contractor at the southeast corner of State Road 23 and the Toll Road. This will be a public hearing with no vote.
Thank you. At this time, pursuant to Indiana law, we will open a public hearing on proposed ordinance 2025-34. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
John Pericini, Coldwell Banker Commercial Office, 633 Windy Cove Court here in Mishawaka. I want to pass out an aerial, just to give you an idea where this site is. This site is owned by Gary Wilson. It's been on the market for quite a few years, kind of a difficult site there along the Toll Road and 23. We annexed next door to it for the all-secure storage, if you remember, a couple of years back, which is opened up now. Mr. Carroll is the developer. He is here today. And if you have any questions with him, and Steve Ruby's here with Abbot Marsh. He's going to kind of present the site plan. We, I think we found like the perfect buyer for this property. It's a landscaping company, backs up against the old Superfund remediation site there in the back end. We did get a unanimous approval from the Plan Commission. We had no remonstrators there. We did get a unanimous approval from the Plan Commission, we had no remonstrators there. I just think it's really a nice fit. As you see, the access issue is a little bit, you know, tight there coming off, it's blocked off by the Toll Road, so not every business would really go there. This just fits in perfect, and so, wanted to kind of give you an idea of what that site looks like. Nothing, everything buttoned up against it is pretty much either commercial or the back end is never going to be, the government owns that back retention area there. So, if you've got any questions from me, if not, Steve's going to present, and then Mr. Carroll's here to answer any questions on the project itself.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pericini? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I do also have a handout, I'll get this started up here. Steve Ruby, Abbot Marsh Consulting, also representing the client here for this site location. As you had mentioned before, it's looking to be rezoned and annexed into the city's limits. The site itself, even though it's a landscape business, they do have some things that are unique to it, some outdoor storage things that were mentioned in some of the use variance items that were previously presented to the Plan Commission. In the use variance, when we do outdoor storage, let's not think of a typical outdoor storage use, they're looking for this to present their product, what they're selling. It has a great visual appeal, as you'll see through the site plan development, there's several images there, so feel free to leaf through those. As part of the development, they'll increase the parking to accommodate the commercial business. They'll also add a outdoor storage building that will house some of their product and pieces that they're presenting. In the front yard where the use variance is being requested, that will allow that outdoor storage, so think of it as a patio, a presentation or outdoor showroom as opposed to a storage yard, and that's what these images will reflect. As a whole, I think, as John had mentioned here, it is a perfect use for this type of client and what they tend to do with their product line, and we see that it's a good fit for the space here, and we ask that you consider these in the review of the project site itself and the annexation process. With that, is there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Ruby? Mr. Benicki?
Thank you. Mr. Ruby, will there be any big trucks coming and going out of this area?
It's anticipated there'll be some large trucks for some delivery of some materials on and off, and some of that will be a specific question to the owner, but I imagine it's going to be a periodic delivery, so it's going to be a product in maybe once a week or once every few weeks.
I just know that going down 23 and you get to that Toll Road and you've got to turn left to get to Hickory, that's just a real tough corner, and I don't want to see, you know, added...
Yeah, it will be a little bit of a challenging movement. Some of the truck drivers, as you know, will also accommodate how those turning movements take place, they'll either turn out one way or the other and come in the same way. We are also providing a turnaround space within the property itself, so they're not actually making a movement back out onto the 23 roadway there, so we're trying to accommodate the safety that way, so they're turning internally to the site and then heading out from the site itself.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Hi.
Yes.
It's nice to have the, I mean, this is pretty neat.
It is a graphic representation. We hope that it'll be fairly close to that, but it does help with the visual.
So, I do have a question, though. Looks like there is a fair amount of forest on there. Is that, are they keeping that?
There is, in the rear of the property, there's a wooded lot. It is anticipated that some of it would be removed for the building, storage building that they anticipate putting there, but it'll be closer towards the house. Obviously, they want to keep their operations pretty tight and compact, so they're not driving to the rear of the lot for their activities, but some of it would be removed as part of that build. Detention basin is also placed back in that rear area, so some of that would be accommodated through that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Ruby? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? If you would, please come forward. Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor? Then, is there anyone with us this evening who wishes to speak in opposition? Please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Are there any council members who wish to speak? Hearing done, then we will close the public hearing on proposed ordinance 2025-34 pursuant to Indiana law. We will take final action on this proposed ordinance at our next regularly scheduled council meeting on December 15th, 2025, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Thank you.
Proposed ordinance number 2025-35, an ordinance amended in Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, is from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from C1 General Commercial to C10 Filling Station Commercial for a fuel kiosk and pumps, part of 3016 West Indian Ridge Boulevard.
Thank you. Ma'am, we have the committee report placed.
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom is referred the matter, a proposed ordinance 2025-35, report that they have examined said matter and that their opinion should be adopted. This is signed by the members present, and I move for its acceptance.
Second. Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Then, hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. With that, we'll move into second reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance 2025-35. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? If you would, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Gabriel Loth of Carlson Consulting Engineers, representing Walmart this evening. Just as was stated before, this is a rezoning, wanting to go from C1 General Commercial to C1 Filling Station. We've been in talks with planning staff for a little over a year at this point, wanting to make sure that we iron out the exact positioning and what would want to be seen to make sure that this gets approved. Additionally, we've submitted a preliminary site plan, just showing what the plans are with the rezoning, so if there's any questions at all, please let me know.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Mr. Benicki?
I go to that Walmart quite a bit, and it looks like you're taking up about a sixth of the parking lot. Is that about right?
I haven't looked at the exact numbers, but it does appear that way.
Where are people going to park to go shopping? Are you more concerned with gas, or are you more concerned with consumers shopping?
I think we're concerned with both. With this, we're going to be asking for a variance soon. We wanted to make sure that we get a site plan completely ironed out before we go in and ask for a reduction in parking to, so we can see exactly how many parking spots we're able to put in there. This Walmart, as I'm sure you're familiar with, shares parking, or shares a parking lot with the Sam's as well. This is something that, I mean, we've seen time and time again with our work over the country, is that there's ample amount of parking between both of those stores to serve both of them.
Okay. Not too far away is a Costco, and I mean, they're 10 cars deep waiting to get in for gas. So, where do you plan on these cars staging to get in here?
We don't really have a staging area set for that. We have 10 pumps there on either side fuel service, so 20 serviceable positions, or sorry, eight pumps, so 16 serviceable positions, as well as parking around the kiosk. Our intention there is to be able to service the amount of people that would require gas there.
Seems pretty tight. I know when I go in there from time to time or drive by, there's always delivery semis, things like that, that are parked kind of right where you're proposing this. What will you do with them, delivery vehicles that are waiting, whether they've dropped off, waiting to leave in the morning, or waiting to drop off the store?
That will be something that we need to coordinate with the store manager there, because to my knowledge, those semi should not be in those parking positions, because they should be allowed for customers, they shouldn't be blocked. That's something that's going to need to be coordinated with the store manager there.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. So, following up on the Costco question, will people that have a Sam's Club membership have a discount, or, I mean, you know how Costco's pricing is for Costco members and it's less expensive? Is, does Walmart follow that same?
I'm not sure what Walmart's exact policy on that is with Sam's Club. It's my understanding they're two different entities, legally speaking, so I'm not sure if there's going to be a discount for Sam's members for Walmart fuel.
The reason I'm asking that is, you know, people go to the Costco because it's a discounted price compared to a market rate price, and, I mean, I go there for gas, and it gets really backed up. So, I can imagine that if you were a Sam's Club cardholder and you got a discount for gas, you, one would go there, and that could cause the kind of traffic backup that Costco experiences. The other thing that I remember is a number of years ago, across the street, another entity wanted to put an oil change facility in the parking lot of Home Depot. Right? Home Depot? And we were pretty concerned about the size of that parking lot, too, and I also know that there were some infrastructure. There's a lot of infrastructure underneath the road, or underneath the parking lot, and our engineering department was pretty concerned about whether, from an engineering standpoint, it would be feasible to put that feature there, that type of business there. So, I would be curious to know what our engineering department thinks about a gas station going in here, too, just given our experience and our thoughts with the oil change building.
Understood.
It's almost the same in some ways. So, I don't know if we might want to get some answers to some questions before we would vote on something like this.
You know, certainly, Mrs. Volker, if it's, you raise good points, and if it's your desire to have further input from city departments, then, you know, a motion to postpone is your right to make. I will note for the record that the staff report indicates that all city departments have reviewed and made comments. We have comments from other departments, none from engineering, but your points still are valid. So, my suggestion would be, let's see what other questions other council members have, and then, depending upon how the conversation goes, it may be appropriate to postpone this in order to run down the answers to those questions, if that's okay with you. Mr. Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. If you answered some of this, forgive me, I was trying to do some math in my head on this a little bit. As far as parking minimums go, do you know roughly what percentage this would put us under the parking minimum when you request that?
I believe the code here is a 5.0. Is that correct? Can you confirm that for me?
What was that?
5.0 per 1,000 square feet of cross municipal area, is that correct for City of Mishawaka there? Don't have that in front of me.
For the record, it's 5.5 per thousand square foot.
Okay. I believe we also have an expansion going in to this, you can see on the site plan that we put in, and that's taking in a little bit of the side parking as well. So, after the expansion and the fuel station, I believe we're looking at 3.16 parking spots per 1,000 square feet.
So, I guess what I'm looking for, if anybody can do the math, is just a simple percentage. What are we under now? What would it be? That's, I just need to wrap my head around, you know, are we 50% under minimum, are we 5% under minimum somewhere in that ballpark?
I'd have to do that math for you, I don't know if I can do that in my head.
And I also am not going to tackle the math, but I will, again, for the record, read from the staff report that says that, and I quote, "Currently, the plan shows that 785 parking spaces exist with 679 spaces remaining after the gas station is developed. Per the ordinance, a total of 855 parking spaces are required for Walmart." So, I read that as today, Walmart has fewer parking spaces than are called for by our ordinance. If, in fact, we approve this matter, then we're going to be even further below what our ordinance would call for. Again, there is a process for a developer such as Walmart to be able to ask for a variance from that ordinance, but this appears to be what the impact would be of an approval of this proposed ordinance this evening.
If I did my math right, and I'll have to have the accountant check me on this, but I think it's 20% under, a little bit over 20% under, so.
Once the gas station goes in.
Once the gas station goes in, yep.
And one notable thing to add is, like you said, that it's currently underparked as it is, being at a 3.76, so wondering what percentage down from that, it's even more minimal from that.
20%.
It's 20% from, currently?
Looks like it'll be 20, if the gas station goes in, it looks like it'll be 20% under what the...
Under the required...
What our ordinance requires.
Folks, if we can, why don't we get back to questions by Mr. Carroll?
I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Benicki?
Thank you. I do have one follow-up. Back to traffic, because I'm on the traffic commission, that place can be a mess this time of year. So, there's three entrances, one into, one into the center, kind of feeds both Sam's and Walmart, and then one for Walmart, one for Sam's, but only one of them is lighted, and it's not a very good light at that.
Understood.
Has there been discussions about adding a light anywhere close by? Not that I want to put more lights, because they're so close already.
Close to the fuel center, is that what you're saying? I'm confused on where you want, where you were suggesting, I guess.
Well, I mean, that, there's a lot of people come out that entrance, and if you're going to add more traffic to it, you know, there may be the necessity to either modify the existing light that you guys have, maybe, you know, two out or something like that. It's just, it's just a bottleneck, as it is now.
Right.
And, you know, there's accidents there all the time in them parking lots, just because people, you know, just trying to go. So, to keep traffic moving with some regularity, you almost have to have either an improved main drive entrance or a second one with a light.
Right, and to answer your question there, I haven't gotten my photometrics plan back from our supplier just yet, but typically, what we have seen going off past experiences is there are lights underneath the canopy that help illuminate that, and additionally, they like to put additional lights surrounding the kiosk and those fuel areas to boost the lighting in those areas. So, I would imagine that...
I'm more talking stoplights, move traffic.
Okay.
People stopping to get in and out.
That is not under our consideration right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Other questions? Mrs. Hazen?
So, normally Walmart, you know, some have the gas stations, some don't. This, it just seems kind of odd that they're adding this so much later. Is that a normal process, or is that a normal process for them?
Yes, we, I believe with our firm, we have about, I think, eight or nine in Indiana alone. I think across the country, it's about 150, 160. Those are just the numbers that I've heard, but this is a common thing. There are a couple that are under construction right now throughout Indiana that are doing similar things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Violi?
So, just to follow up on what Ron had stated about the gasoline, and I think Kate also said something, this won't be a Sam's only, it's a Walmart, so they used to, Murphy's used to be their brand, is that still the case?
These aren't Murphy's, these are Walmart branded and owned. So, these are not Murphy oils. That's your question there.
Yeah, so, I know Costco, we discussed Costco, but you have to be a member to go there. This will be open to anybody, because it's on the Walmart, it's not a Sam's thing, is what, I guess I want to make sure I understand that.
Yes, it is like she said earlier, that I'm not sure if Sam's has discounts at this, that's not really my expertise there, but I know that this is a Walmart branded and owned, so is Oakland to all of the public.
So, they're going to probably have market rate gasoline prices versus the discounted Costco prices, would that...
That would make sense to me.
Well, maybe you can find that out, and make sure we are all on the same page on that.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ramalanti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming this evening. I just want to take this time to, one, echo Mr. Benicki's comments. I do shop at that location quite regularly, and it is very difficult to exit that property, so with the inc... So with the increased traffic, again, I just echo Mr. Benicki's comments and concerns regarding traffic. My other question is, and I think you had provided this information, but I was reading some documents, but, so as Walmart sits right now, you are under the required parking spots, correct?
Yes, sir.
And if the gas station gets approved, you'll be further under that requirement, correct?
Yes, sir.
So this is the question, or the point that I think you may have said, but in order of, say this gets approved, and then we're further, you're further under the required parking spots, what happens next?
We go and ask, we apply for a variance, is the next process there.
And what if that gets denied?
I don't have the answers for you there. I think that's about my.
I guess my question is, would you ask for that variance prior to constructing the gas station?
Yes, of course. I think the next steps, assuming approval here tonight, are a submittal on December 9th for the Planning Commission for Site Plan Approval and the variance for parking.
Okay. And so just if anybody can confirm that, so if the gas station gets approved this evening, the variance gets denied, we could, then therefore, the gas station will not go in, correct?
I'll defer to Mr. Prince, who I.
Sitting in the bullpen.
Sense is in the bullpen waiting to come to the podium, but it seems to me that the two matters stand independently. If this matter is approved this evening, then the variance stands on its own. If the variance wouldn't be approved, then the site plan would have to be adjusted to reflect the fact that the variance had not been approved. Can the site plan be adjusted in order to reflect the lack of the variance? That's a rhetorical question. I don't know that. I'll leave that to Sam's Club, Walmart, and their professionals. But I think that they're two independent matters, at least in my opinion. But I do also think that it's appropriate for the council to further probe this issue because it is so important to so many of us with regard to whether we feel like this meets the statutory criterion for approval of this proposed ordinance. So did I help you at all, Mr. Mamalanti, or muddy the waters further?
You did. You helped me. Thank you.
You are welcome. Mrs. Volker.
Thank you. Just one follow-up. And maybe it's a suggestion, and maybe Mr. Prince has the answers to this, but I'm, you know, given the discussion about the light, and we all know that getting in and out of that parking area is really tight. Have, do you know what the anticipated increase in traffic will be going in and out of that?
I do not have those numbers for you today.
Is that something that you would be able to find out?
I believe that's, if the city required it, that's something that we would want to provide for you, so we would go then, get it then.
Is it something that perhaps you've done, you know, at other gas stations? You know, other, anyway, I would be curious to know what the increased traffic would be there.
Right. We, I guess, to answer your question, we have done them in the past. We, it is not standard, I guess, due diligence for us to go get those numbers while we're still in this kind of conceptual phase. So I do not have those numbers for you tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Sir, I have a couple. First of all, thank you for your patience with us as you've worked through these issues and these questions. I do appreciate that. And I will tell you that I remain open to vote in favor, voting in favor of this proposed ordinance, but I do have some concerns that hopefully you'll be able to help me work through.
Understood.
With regard to the parking, I believe that to be interrelated with the discussion that you and Mr. Benicki, my colleague, had with regard to the semis. And I can appreciate your answer that the policing of the parking lot, if you will, is going to be much more within the power of the manager of that facility than it is you as, you know, a representative here this evening. But I will tell you that if I understood your answer correctly, to say that it's going to have, that issue is going to have to be coordinated with the management without any kind of commitment on the part of the petitioner to address that issue, I find that to be problematic. Because as the record has already reflected, Walmart right now has fewer than parking lot, or parking spaces, rather, I'm sorry, than what our ordinance would call for. Now, if this is approved, we would either further fall below the ordinances. We'd have ample parking for the gas station use, but in terms of the overall parking lot, we would be losing quite a bit. I'll rely on my colleague's math that it's a 20% reduction. The staff report shows pictures of the semis in the parking lot before us this evening. I don't know anybody who has ever driven in that parking lot who hasn't seen semis there. So I can't take it on just blind faith that if we approve this, that there isn't going to be some commitment on the part of Walmart to deal with those semis. I'm not voting in favor of this when you're already below the number of parking spaces and then have semis sitting out there further posing a problem for people who are trying to ingress and egress from this property. So some type of more binding commitment on behalf of your client is going to be necessary for me, at least, to be able to vote in favor of this. So comment more than a question, and I apologize for filibustering you there. Is there anything that you can share with us that would help myself and my colleagues feel better about Walmart's commitment, if this is approved, to really police that parking lot? I choose that phrase consciously to make sure that there isn't going to be a traffic problem for the customers who are coming in and out of the parking lot, whether they're using the gas station or not.
Right. Understand your question there, and I believe it's very reasonable. And I guess, as you stated at the beginning, you know, the policing of the parking lot is not something that I can really speak on tonight. That's, I guess, something that I would have to go and ask and get a commitment from Walmart. I can't commit to something like that on their behalf tonight.
That's reasonable. Let me ask you this. In order to allow you to have the time to be able to do some of the, to do some follow-up on the points that have been raised by my colleagues, Mrs. Volker brought up traffic and traffic counts. We're now having a discussion with regard to how Walmart is going to be a good corporate citizen and make sure that there isn't a problem with regard to traffic in and out of that parking lot if we approve this. What type of developmental timeline problems would be raised if we postponed this matter until our next council meeting on December 15th in order to provide you with an opportunity to consult with your client and come back to us with some more information?
From developmental standpoint, I guess we would be delayed with a site plan approval and parking variance till the next available filing deadline for that. I, we obviously want rezoning approval before we continue down the path of the variance and site plan approval because can't put that there if it's not zoned correctly. Those are the main concerns that I see. Obviously, we'd want to get those questions answered for you as soon as possible.
I appreciate that. And again, I'd be more comfortable with having those questions answered because I legitimately think that there is a need for more gas and filling station access to be available and opportunities to be available in that area. So I think this meets a need. It just feels to me like there are some issues that need to be ironed out. And I'll also acknowledge, it's not our role to approve the site plan, but I believe that the statute that we have to look at allows us to have some discretion and some right to have these questions answered before we cast a vote that indicates that this is responsible development. I think these issues go to whether or not this is responsible development. I find Sam's Club and Walmart to be responsible corporate citizens. I think they do good business, and we value them in Michilwaka, but I think that before, I would be willing to vote in favor of this. I'd like to hear the answers to some of these questions and have some more information fleshed out. So that's a long-winded way of me saying that if my colleague, Mrs. Volker, was so inclined at some point in time to ask to postpone this matter until our next council meeting, I'd be inclined to support that.
Understood.
Is there anything else that you want to share with us before?
I guess we, if that matter does happen, we'd love to have your questions explained thoroughly over to us, so I can get those over to Walmart, who I represent, just so I can make sure that we're getting clear answers on exactly what you guys would want to see and that we don't need to go through postponing it again if that does happen.
Absolutely. That's fair. Thank you. Mr. Benicki.
When he's done speaking, I would like to talk to Mr. Prince, if that's available, before we would make any motions.
That's up to Mrs. Volker, but that sounds to be like it's a reasonable request to me, Mr. Benicki.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else for this very patient gentleman who has been at the podium for quite some time now? And thank you again, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? If you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone with us this evening who wishes to speak in opposition? Please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Hearing no one, then Mr. Benicki's request for Mr. Prince to come to the podium stands. And I suspect you were going to do that without a request anyway, weren't you, Mr. Prince?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Ken Prince, Director of Planning and Community Development for the city. I guess I'll, before I weigh in, I'll just respond to any questions of the council.
Okay. Mr. Benicki.
Thank you. Mr. Prince, looking at the parking lot configuration, the way cars get in and out, I mean, there's one stoplight, pretty tight. Is there anything in the plans, either on the city side or the developer's side, that would help to improve that at this time?
No. And I say that with what I'd like the council to understand, and everybody has experienced this, but I'll just say it out loud because I'm sure many will comment on it, at least watching it on Facebook. But we design it very specifically so that it is easy to get in, and we don't care how long it takes you to get out. That's just the reality. We need the roads to function, and how we do that, you look at the mall, you look at Target, you look at Costco, very easy to get in, much harder to get out because ultimately we need that traffic to flow, and that's specifically designed and set up that way. So regarding the traffic and when we talk about the number of parking spaces, I do want to go on record as it's very common, the mall has less than four per thousand. When you look up at Heritage Square, it has less than four per thousand. We routinely do that on very large centers when you look at the efficiency. The only, we want them to accommodate their own needs. This isn't like a grid where you're downtown and you're parking on streets. If you go into Walmart or Sam's Club and you are not able to find a parking spot, you're just not going there. So they would be hurting their own business by providing less parking spaces than what they need. And in cases where parking is a demand, they do have other options available to them. So they could actually rip out their entire parking lot and do a perk system and then fill the ponds in front to make more area available. That would be extremely cost prohibitive. And to answer Mrs. Volker's question regarding what the difference was between the Home Depot, the oil change being proposed, engineering's concern in that location, the Home Depot was designed with an infiltration system in that area. So literally by putting a fuel or an oil change facility in that location, you would be removing that infiltration system as part of it. In this case, this is an impervious area in Walmart's parking area that was designed to go to the retention ponds. They're not physically altering those retention ponds, so literally, they don't have to do any additional stormwater requirements in order to fit the gas station in there because it's all been designed as impervious anyway, that is going to that pond. If anything, they're actually getting a benefit for ripping some of it up and putting green space in that area. So, and then to your point, Mr. President, there are site plan issues that have to be worked on, and that engineering regarding their weigh-in on this project, every department that typically reviews site plans is responsible for submitting a sheet on comments. Engineering did submit a sheet and identify that they had no comments and that it was approved as submitted for the rezoning approval, so that they, inherently, they didn't have any concerns. But obviously, when the site plan is filed, they may in fact have comments or questions regarding that. So, and then regarding the access to get out, I appreciate that there's not a queuing. Like, if you look at the mall and Costco and Target, for example, when they queue up at the light, they have a much longer throat, and I think that's part of the confusion here. So we could ask them to look at a longer throat in terms of the exit traffic. I think the issue there is then you're looking at a greater parking reduction by providing that throat to try to orient people going through it. So you, I would ask, is it, I don't shop there very often, so is it an inconvenience or is it a fundamental safety problem in terms of getting in and out? If it's not a safety problem, I would leave it to them to figure out. If it's a safety problem that needs to be addressed, that's a different issue, but I'd rely on the council for your feedback if we should ask that question to them to have them address it.
Again, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Any other questions for Mr. Prince?
Mr. Carroll. Real quick one. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Prince, it just, I just want to make sure, understanding what you're saying, because my main concern, I think, is what you addressed. You don't see the addition of a gas station, regardless of parking minimums, as something that would cause a safety issue at any of those areas?
Not from a vehicular standpoint. I mean, it's no worse than the parking lot that is there currently.
Sure.
Correct.
I mean, I think that was my main concern, and I think the other one you addressed, too, because the way you phrase the numbers, so many per thousand, this, it would come out to roughly the same math, that if they're 20% under, that's not abnormal for something like this. Did I hear you right on that?
That's correct. What we don't understand is why the parking is less than what was originally approved. So going back to the site plan, that was a question. We did have it when we went through the numbers, and when they went through the numbers, we arrived at different numbers, and it could be how things were striped, perhaps in the back, where they were relying on parking that we couldn't identify, but I can't explain why there's less parking out there than what was required by ordinance.
I think that's everything I.
I will note it was done right before I got here in 1999, so.
Of course.
Duly noted.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Prince? Mr. Violi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could it be that they combined Sam's and Walmart, square footage, and then used both parking lots to come up with that? And that's why it was approved, because, like you said, why they approved it, knowing that it was less, does it somehow incorporate Sam's and using their parking? And it works if you do both parking lots in both buildings?
I don't believe so, but we can verify that.
Just a thought.
Thank you. Anything else for Mr. Prince?
Thank you for your clarification. Before you leave the podium, any thoughts that you want to share with regard to the repetitive presence of the semis being parked in the rear of this parking lot and how that would, if at all, be impacted by a filling station now being introduced to the site?
They're going to need to find a spot for them. So one, I'm not clear if the semis are Walmart deliveries, and I think that's a fair question to ask, if they are Walmart or if there are other people that are using that. When you look at Meyer, for example, on the south side, we had a number of semis that were using the Meyer parking lot, kind of as a staging area, as a resting area for that. And then Meyer posted signs that said, you're not allowed to park here for that use, it's for the parking lot. So I think if we can ascertain if it's Walmart, I believe he's correct, and the store manager rightfully should be taking care of it regarding how those are properly staged on-site. If they are off-site, we probably need to do the same thing as Meyer and have those signs posted so that people aren't using this area. And I sympathize with the truck drivers, they need areas to rest, but at the same time, we need the parking lot to function to serve the public at large.
So I would summarize as, the experience that we've had is that other major retail outlets have taken steps to be able to address those issues when they have had their own issues with semis in their parking lot. So it's not impossible for a business such as Walmart to be able to remediate and address those semis there, especially in an area where we spend significant dollars to try to make it an attractive area, an attraction for people to come to. And would you agree with me that that is inconsistent with some of the investments that we make and the standards that we have with regard to businesses not on the north, not only on the northern part of Michilwaka, but throughout Michilwaka?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Anything else for Mr. Prince? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we are back to questions and comments from the council. Mr. Carroll.
Real quick, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't put any bad numbers out there when we were looking at that. It's currently about 8.2% under. The reduction from what it currently is, I come up with about a 13.5% reduction. It'd be 20 from what the ordinance said it should be.
21%.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for the clarification. Mr. Evans.
Talking about the truck parking out there.
Talk about the truck parking out there. You see these trucks out here? I was out there the other day, and those trucks aren't for Walmart or Sam's Club. They're there because they're resting and they're waiting for another load and that, so they're just parking in those parking lots.
Well, these don't even have trucks hooked up to them.
Yeah. But you see that flatbed out there? I mean, Walmart and Costco is not going to use a flatbed, and they're going to be using enclosed trailers and that. And I was, as I say, I was out there the other day, and I couldn't find a dang parking place. Driving around and around and that because it was just packed. Now, maybe it's this time of the year, but when you start eliminating parking places and you allow semis to park in there, you're discouraging people from going in there, shopping and that. We don't want to discourage people from coming into our area and shopping in our facilities. And so I have a concern about eliminating and approving this and eliminating that many parking places.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Mr. Prince, I appreciate you clearing up my concern, wherever you are, about the engineering and how the two different parking lots are used. So I would withdraw my concern about engineering and about the ingress and egress. So I, I'm not going to be asking for a postponement. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the council? Mr. Memelanti?
I would just like to thank Mr. Prince for coming up to the podium, give some clarification on some of my concerns, and you brought up some very compelling and interesting points regarding the number of spaces, and I guess it does make sense since it's not taking away spots like it is downtown for our public and our local citizens, and it's up to Walmart to determine if that's going to influence their business. With the other information that you gave, I'm willing to take action on this tonight as on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Loth, could I impose upon you to come back to the podium for one brief minute? Just when you thought you were out, we pulled you back in.
Yes, sir.
Again, thank you for your patience. Let's go back to the semi issue.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way that you can firm up your earlier answer and make a, more of a commitment on behalf of your client to you interact with the management of the store, to ask them to take those reasonable measures that our friend, Mr. Prince, highlighted other businesses in Michoacan have taken, to avoid their parking lot becoming a truck rest stop?
I guess the other measures, including signage around to state no truck parking, is that what you're referring to?
I am indeed.
I believe those measures, we could, we could solidify a position there, that those signs could be added in as part of this fuel project to ensure that that does not happen.
So I'm going to try to attempt to parrot that back to you. So on behalf of your client, you're committing to us that you will work, that Walmart will take reasonable steps to place signage and on the property and take other actions to curtail the long-term parking of semis in their parking lot. Is that correct?
I can commit to signage. I don't think I'm at liberty to commit to much else.
Okay.
I can, I can coordinate with the store manager, like said before. I'm just not in a position where I can be committing to things on behalf of Walmart like that. But I think, like you were stating before, that there are other developments around that have the, you know, no trucks allowed to park, there's no sort of signs. We can definitely add those in as part of the development, but I can't commit to much else because store manager ultimately really does have more authority than I do.
Agreed. As I said earlier, I would acknowledge that. I'm willing to take a little bit of a leap of faith, it's not the biggest leap of faith I've ever taken, but I'm willing to take a little bit of a leap of faith based upon that representation. I will tell you, I don't visit Walmart very frequently, but it sounds like my colleagues do. And if there is not signage that's put up, if there is not a reasonable effort made by Walmart to address this, my opinion would be that Walmart hasn't lived up to the commitment that you've made on their behalf this evening, and I would work with our council attorney to take any actions allowable by the council under Indiana law to revisit this issue. That's all. It's gone beyond semis in a parking lot at this point in time. It's now about people being good corporate citizens, entities being good corporate citizens, and doing what they should, like other corporate citizens do, to avoid these type of circumstances. Nobody benefits from those semis being out in that parking lot if they're not serving Walmart's need. I hope we could agree on that.
Of course.
So, I'm willing to take that leap of faith, but my strong sense of it is that this council and our administration will keep a good eye on what has happened there, and if we feel as though Walmart isn't acting responsibly, then we'll review whatever actions we can take to try to address that. But based upon your further clarification, I also will be inclined to vote in favor of this this evening. So, thank you again for your patience with us and working through this.
Of course, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Carroll?
This one's actually for the caveman lawyer. Do we need to, correct me if I'm wrong, but can we get firm commitments between, if we vote positive on this, between this and the variance? Because they won't be able to build it without the variance, and that's the, maybe a traffic question for Walmart?
Since it's a developmental variance that is acted upon by a separate body, not this council, it's really beyond our scope to be able to impose that condition. We have the ability to be able to impose reasonable conditions upon the actions that we take, to be able to make it subject to the action of another body that also has discretion to vote in favor or against based upon the law. I'd be hesitant to think that that would be in our best interest to do so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, in particular, any other questions for Mr. Loth, who was very patient standing here at the podium yet again?
Thank you, sir. Of course, I guess one thing I have to add is, just to put your mind at ease or anything, if you, given that scenario, would consider a conditional approval based on those verbal commitments that I could maybe get from Walmart within the next week or so? If that's the way you would want to go for a more firm and solid answer from myself and from Walmart?
And I appreciate your suggestion, but rather than that verbal commit, the more we try to make that verbal commitment binding, the more you're going to cause me to be inclined to ask for a written commitment and to really embed that in this approval. So, would that make me feel better? Yeah, slightly. But at this point in time, I'll go back to what I said earlier. I appreciate, this is the first time you've appeared in front of us, you're not even from the state of Indiana, as far as I can tell, but-
Yes, sir, I'm not.
I'm willing to give you the benefit of the doubt that you're going to follow up with your client based upon what you have shared with us this evening and what we've shared with you, I just want to go more to the point.
Of course.
And again, long after you return to the state of Tennessee, there are going to be people here who are going to be visiting Walmart to make sure that they're doing what we believe that they should in order to be a good corporate citizen. So, what will happen at that point in time, I don't know. But if you want to provide us with some follow-up information, I think we'd certainly all entertain that, but at this point in time, a conditional approval doesn't appear to make, doesn't appear to advance the process, in my opinion, but I appreciate the suggestion nonetheless.
Understood.
Any other questions for this very patient gentleman? Thank you again, sir.
Of course.
We are back to questions and comments from the council for yet the third time. Hearing none, I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Hayson?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
No.
Mr. Emmons?
No.
Ms. Hahn?
Yes.
Mr. Memelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two against. Post-ordinance passes.
Thank you. And with that, we will move into privilege of the floor. At this time, members of the public are invited to the podium to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor. Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Hearing no one, we will move into unfinished business of which there is none, new business. Is there any new business to come before the council? Mr. Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. We will be having a December meeting of the Second District Neighborhood Group. It will be brief, we'll talk about primarily, I would assume, snow plowing, but that will be at 7:00 on the, as always, the second Thursday of every month.
Thank you, sir. Any other new business? And if not, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Were adjourned, thank you.